I'd like to call the December 5th meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orth.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Hedrick.
Here.
Mr. Bazani.
Here.
All present.
Would you all join me in the invocation and pledge of allegiance by the Reverend Kevin Smith?
Let us pray. Most wise and eternal God, our Father, it's once again that we call upon your most holy and everlasting name. God, just to say thank you tonight, God. Thank you for just the many blessings that you bestow upon us, God. God, we thank you, dear God, for allowing us to come tonight, dear God, and to be able to discuss the business of our county, God. Now, Lord, we just ask you for wisdom, we ask you for knowledge, and we ask you for revelation, God. And God, we pray, asking you to bless our first responders. God, we ask you to keep them safe, God. Keep our schools safe, dear God, and all the citizens of this county. God, we pray right now, dear God, just asking that everything that we say tonight will be said and done so that you will be able to get the glory, you will be able to get the honor and the praise. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion to approve the minutes from July 5th? All in favor? Move to adopt the agenda? Hold on. We do need to change. We're adding the VODI grants. Changing.
Mr. Chair, if we could pull out from the consent agenda, item C, for discussion, because there is a change to that. That's not included in the board packet.
Are they here?
No. This is something for resolution, for your consideration.
We'll move that to G and move board appointments to H.
Okay, thank you.
Motion and second. As amended. Wait a second.
Move to approve.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've adopted the agenda. Approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, matters presented by the board?
You just.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matters presented by the board? Okay. County administrator items?
Want to thank all the participants and sponsors and volunteers and staff who made this weekend's events possible. We had a great Christmas parade and tree lighting here in the court circle. It was very successful. Would like to remind the public that we do not have a work session this month. And also, for those who are interested, there's going to be a public meeting in person and hybrid version on the master park planning for Macha Comico and the other property that is near Rosewell. And that will be on December 14th at 6 o'clock at TC Walker. And we'll have information going out about how they, people can join for the electric way. And the most important thing I'd like to do is to introduce to the board Tammy Dunn, who, if she would come up to the podium so y'all can see her. She is our new HR director. And she started yesterday, which seems like a lifetime ago. I think those have been some pretty long days. But we're very happy to have her here and looking forward to a long tenure with her.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Thank you very much.
That's all I have. Thank you.
We'll move to scheduled presentations. It's a presentation of resolution to commend the service of Michael W. Hedrick as a member of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors. Come forward. Is it on? This is a resolution to commend the service of Michael W. Hedrick as a member of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors understands that one of its members, the Honorable Michael W. Hedrick, will complete his public services to the citizens of Gloucester on December 31st, 2023. And whereas it is the position of this board that Mr. Hedrick served this community with intelligence, understanding, compassion, and integrity during his four years on this board. And whereas during his tenure, he has been a strong advocate for fire and rescue, law enforcement, public safety, local business, in addition to serving our vulnerable populations. And whereas throughout his term as the Ware District Representative on the board, he has served not only his constituents, but also the citizens of the entire county with an untiring dedication to improving the quality of life for all. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors that the Honorable Michael W. Hedrick, Ware District Supervisor of Gloucester County, from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2023, is hereby publicly recognized for his dedicated and unselfish public service to the citizens of this community. Further, be it resolved by the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors that this resolution be spread among the minutes of the board and publicly presented to the Honorable Michael W. Hedrick as an expression of the highest esteem in which he is held by his colleagues, county staff, and the citizens of Gloucester County. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. What an honor. It truly has been an honor to serve with my fine colleagues and the many friends that I've met and have here in the county. One of the gentlemen that isn't here now is Michael Weinberger, who was a real aide to me in my first two years. And I didn't want to overlook him either when I told you, gentlemen, how much I appreciated our relationship. Likewise, Ted and Carol and all of your staff. I just leave here knowing that the county is in really good hands. We have a great leadership capability in the county. And that's basically all I've got to say about that. Thank you very much.
The next item is a quarterly update from the VDOT, Lee McKnight.
Good evening, members of the board. Here to give a quarterly update. My name is Lee McKnight. The first thing on here is the construction's completed. I know Mr. Crisco is very interested in this particular project, Route 619, Fiddler's Green sidewalk connections. Once those signal head modifications can be made, this project will be fully completed. Right now, I'm going to keep it on the update until those modifications have been made. And then we can take it off the plan.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean taking the right, no right turn on red?
The plan is to adjust the signal, to modify the signal so that when the buttons are pressed, it will restrict right turns. But when they're not pressed, you will be able to make right turns. Some projects in the next 24 months, we did, again, advertise the Guinea Road Route 17 intersection improvement. That was, the bids were rejected. They just came in too high. The bidder was not seen as reasonable or responsive. So we're going to have to re-advertise that and hopefully get a more reasonable bid on that project. Some traffic engineering requests. I know this is the hot topic of the moment, Woods Crossroads Route 17 intersection. The preliminary engineering for the design phase of that project, which is the restricted U-turn crossing, has begun. They are working urgently on that particular, the design phase. That's already started. I've been a part of some of those preliminary meetings. So we're getting moving on that. I don't have a timetable for the completion of the design phase, but survey has already been completed. Utility work, environmental work, that's all ongoing currently. So working urgently on that project. Hopefully get that out to bid here very soon and under construction. TC Walker Route 17, that intersection is the signalized portion of that, of those two intersections. That intersection is under review currently. There was a recent fatality, as most of you are aware. So they're going to review that signalized intersection to see if there's anything that needs to be modified as a result of that fatality. Many of you might see unsignalized intersection signage upgrades throughout the county. There's a total of 16 locations. I know I've gotten a few calls on some of those, but they are upgrading a lot of those intersections currently throughout the county.
So question, exactly what do you mean by improving? Just out of curiosity.
Sure. Mostly it's signage. If, a lot of these intersections have not been reviewed in many, many years. So as a part of a systemic approach, they're looking at all of these rural intersections, and most of it is signage, stop sign ahead, signs, intersection ahead, curve, warning signs, stuff like that.
With regard to some of the intersections that have signals, some of them do not have left turn signals. Is that ever going to change? So for example, like Bellroy Road, will that ever change? And is there a reason why some roads don't have the left turn signal approaching, you know?
I guess it depends on the, these are unsignalized.
Okay, okay.
Intersections that they're doing these upgrades. But I can certainly look into Bellroy. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, some of the citizens have, well, I can get to that, but.
Okay.
When we get to the signalized things. Sorry.
Yes, sir. Some supervisor requests. I did want to hit on Mr. Gibson, Almondsville Road. I will review that for any maintenance items that can be done in the immediacy. I did want to mention, you know, there's always, we could always prioritize that through the secondary six-year plan. Revenue sharing is an option for potential widening of that road or lifting of the road. Possibly smart scale. I'd really have to dig into it. I don't know if it'd qualify for smart scale funding. But I did want to mention that the DCR flood fund, I know the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission has had a lot of luck applying for DCR flood funds for roads such as this. So I can certainly work with Kurt Smith and Louis over there at the PDC, and we can look at that. Mr. Bazani, Oyster Cove, that has been completed with surface treatment, and the pipe has been extended on Little England Road. So that, that work should be majoritely complete. There might be some small, some punch list items, but for the most part, that is complete. And the right of way on Oyster Cove has been mulched, so that's all cut back as well.
Questions, Chair? So Little England's on the six-year plan, secondary road. So when, what kind of timetable are we looking at to get Little England widened or refurbished such that two cars can pass each other safely?
Well, it's on the six-year plan, I believe, for 2025, if I'm not mistaken. But I'll double check that.
Thank you.
I did want to mention some maintenance items. It is December, which means that four-letter word, snow, it's possible. We have conducted our VDOT State Forces dry runs. So you may have seen some of our trucks running around the county. They are just performing their dry run, bringing new employees with them, showing problem areas, making sure that they know where they're going to turn around. So please don't be alarmed with that. We will be performing our contractor dry runs in two weeks. And again, same, same thing. Some of these contractors are not familiar with the roads in Gloucester, so we want to make sure that we're taking them out in sunny conditions and not throwing them out on the roads in the middle of the night in some back road and then expecting them to know how to get around. So you may see some contractors running routes, kind of getting familiar with the county. That's what they're doing. I did want to mention, if you know anyone that would like to push snow for us this year, we are, we would love to have them. We're a little short this year. So anyone that you could send us our way, we would be very appreciative. And with that, I will be happy to take any questions as I'm sure there are some.
Mr. Crisco.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. I also want to give kudos. We received, some of us received an email this morning from a gentleman, gentleman down on Aberdeen Creek Road complaining about potholes. So I responded and told him I would let you know tonight because you were going to be here. He responded with, hey, all good. They fill those potholes today. So again, you got the luck there. But my question for you with the DCR flood funds, I've been getting a few phone calls and messages about folks for fair weather flooding. Sunny day, this time of year with the fall, winter, spring, we're having some issues with roads that just get inundated with regular high tide waters. Is that something we should be looking at through DCR flood funding? Or is that something that you guys should be presenting that list to you all so that you all can look at doing some things differently?
I think both. I think it's a combined approach. I mean, obviously, I think we would all agree that the problem is outside of the road, you know, that's causing it to flood. But that does not mean that there aren't items that we need to address on the road to help alleviate some of that flooding. Ultimately, when, as we've discussed, when you build up, you have got to build out. That's, that's the general rule of thumb. A lot of these roads, that means acquiring right of way. So that does present some sort of an issue. And then ultimately, you're building essentially a dam or a dike that is going to allow people to get to inundated property. So I think it's a larger issue than just the roads, but it certainly, that's a component of it.
Yeah, I'll echo Mr. Crisco's comments because there are lots of roads, especially down in Guinea. And I've become very familiar with some of those roads as I try to go fishing. But, you know, people have to be very aware of the tides because if you have these exceptionally high tides, you can get up to a foot of water on these roads all of a sudden, and they don't leave very fast. And I'm wondering if some of these roads could have signs that might suggest that, you know. Oh, yeah, sorry. I thought about that. But yeah, it's, anyway.
If it were only that easy.
I know.
Oh, it's that easy. It was also easy for those folks to rip them out of yards, too, and storm the ditch down the road.
Anyway, but the other thing, the signalized intersections, again, one of my constituents asked about, you know, some of the roads are, do not allow you to make a left turn on green. It's a red light. And some roads, you can make a left turn. Is there any reason why some roads have restricted left turn signals?
For flashing yellow.
For flashing yellow.
Oh.
Flashing yellow.
Okay, so, so some, I guess it would depend on, like, it all depends on the phases of the, of the signal. So if it has a dedicated left turn lane, that has a dedicated signal head for left turns, generally, they're trying to get those flashing left.
So Bellroy doesn't have that.
That, that would probably be why.
Someone said it might be because there are schools there or whatever. But I've noticed, again, I know Guinea, just because it's a pretty difficult road to traverse to make a left turn. I can see why that doesn't have a flashing yellow. But a lot of the other roads do.
Right.
And it'd be nice to know of the ones that don't, why they don't have that flashing yellow. If they have the dedicated left turn lane. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So.
Mr. Bazani.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. McKnight, so is it the general rule that when you have two lanes turning left, like, like you don't put flashing lights?
That's correct.
Okay, because everybody's been asking me, why can't we have a flashing light? Then that's the reason why.
Yeah.
But it's a safety issue more than anything else.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. Mr. McKnight, question. The guard rail down on Indian Road.
Uh huh.
That I asked about.
Yes, sir.
Has anybody been out to?
Yes, we have, we have evaluated that, and that is on their to-do list, believe it or not. They, they're between contractors right now, but yes, sir, that is on their to-do list.
That's great. Because it makes a lot of people happy. They go to that church, they go to Bible study, and they don't want to drive around that curve at night without that guard rail. Thank you so much. Take care of that. Appreciate it.
More less comment. I've noticed that some roads have enhanced reflective tape. Is that something that is going to happen throughout the county on some of the roads? You know, like the stop signs and signs, I mean, the whole sign is now bright yellow.
Yeah, well, it kind of depends on, sometimes that's spot to spot. If we're having issues with folks running stop signs, or we'll, we'll try to bring more attention to that sign with reflective tape. But if there's a specific intersection that you'd like us.
I just noticed, you know, TC Walker Road has a number of those really bright reflective signs as you, you know, make the left and go towards TC Walker Environmental Educational Center.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank you, thank VDOT for resurfacing Harkam Road. That's been long awaited, and the residents are very appreciative of that. I see that Pianka Tank Drive is also on the list to be resurfaced, and I'm hopeful that that can be resurfaced as soon as possible. Speaking to the flooding issue, as we've discussed, I sent you some materials on the flooding on Almondsville Road, and appreciate you taking a look at some options there because they are definitely having some, some repeat regular flooding that's becoming a hazard for that roadway. And as you mentioned earlier, Woods Crossroads is a major issue for our community. And I know that we have a lot of residents here tonight who plan to speak at the citizen comment period. And I just, I feel like I owe it to you. You've heard my thoughts before, but to the citizens who are here to share some thoughts with you on that intersection, because that does fall within the Petsworth District, there's a long history and discussion related to that, to that intersection. And the bottom line is, that is one of the most dangerous intersections in our transportation district, one of the most dangerous intersections in the, in the state. We have had multiple fatalities and multiple serious injuries within the past year. And we all know that if nothing is done at that intersection, we are going to continue to have deaths there. We're going to have citizens who are, continue to get seriously injured there. And so something's got to be done. And unfortunately, we've got a difference of opinion because VDOT is very clearly intending to build an R-turn or R-cut at that intersection. And on behalf of my constituents, they have made it very, very clear that their desires for a traffic signal at this intersection. And they will be paying for whatever is done at this intersection. They are the taxpayers who will be funding this project. And I think it's been made very clear to VDOT, the view of the citizens. And I just want to go over that with you to remind you and VDOT, because I know that as part of your job, you, you report to VDOT about what the community wants. And, and so just thinking about over the past two years, the efforts to address this. Initially, I submitted petitions with the signatures of over 600 citizens from the community who urged VDOT to build a traffic light. Then there was a town hall at Petsworth Elementary School, and it was very clear that the overwhelming consensus of the citizens was for a traffic light rather than the, the R-turn. Then we had multiple meetings here at the board. Again, overwhelming support for the traffic light by the citizen commenters. And, and I think the reasons why are a couple reasons. Number one, it's less expensive. And we're all in this economy in these times with precious tax dollars. When you have one solution, the traffic light that's millions of dollars cheaper than an R-turn, that's, that's a pretty easy call, I think, in most citizens' minds. Secondly, it's quicker to install. As the testimony that you've provided previously, this traffic light could get up and running, provided the funding is there. It's, it's a quicker process. So a quicker process means we have a safer intersection more quickly. And, and really, I think the third main reason is sometimes the best solution is the most simple solution. And traffic lights are a time-tested, simple solution, all up and down. Every major intersection up and down Route 17 has a traffic light. It's, it's what's been in place for decades. We have no R-turns in up and down 17. And I know that statistically, both options could make that intersection safer. I understand that. And I understand, and I think the citizens understand, just because we have a traffic light there doesn't mean that's going to eliminate all of the crashes. I mean, people are looking at their cell phones, they're drinking and driving, they're not paying attention. There're going to be crashes no matter what's done there. But what I am urging VDOT to do on behalf of the citizens is to reconsider its decision, choose the simple, the less expensive, and the quicker options so we can save lives and prevent injuries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. I've been fighting this fight here in the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission with you. We have several R-cuts of different variations throughout the county. About a week, eight, 10 days ago, I was driving northbound from Short Lane to Walmart. You know, there's a R-cut right there where you make the U-turn to go back into Aldi and the shopping center there. Guess what had happened, Mr. McKnight? There was an accident with a rollover at an R-cut. So I don't see the benefit of the extra safety that this is going to provide when, in an area in the county where the speed limit is 15 miles an hour slower, we had an accident at the, the safety feature of the year for VDOT that resulted not only in an accident, but a rollover accident at 45 miles an hour. I have real concerns about VDOT's solution. I also have an issue with, all of a sudden, now we have H-SIP funds available, which, with the intersection that prior to us asking it not to be funded, all of a sudden went through the H-SIP scoring process. It hadn't gone through that process, but now, all of a sudden, because the board and the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission said, hey, we don't want this funded with the smart scale, then VDOT just goes and runs it through another one of their programs to find funding for it. Again, this is taxpayer money, and we need to start listening to what the taxpayers want to do with their money.
So first of all, to address the H-SIP. H-SIP is a federally funded program, Highway Safety Improvement Program. So it is a federal program. Mr. Crisco is absolutely correct. Historically, it has been reserved for systemic improvements. So for example, rumble strips, the, the high visibility backing on signal heads, those sort of systemic corridor-wide projects, they have, the federal government has released that and opened that up to spot improvements. And so the department did apply for federal funding through the H-SIP program using the same application that the smart scale application that they use, that we use for the, the smart scale application through H-SIP, and it was granted funding. It's federal dollars, again.
But where do those federal dollars come from?
Right.
Mine in your back pocket.
And I agree, and totally understand. But I think at this point, we all agree that there's a problem at this intersection. We disagree about what the best treatment type to use at the intersection. However, statistically, the statistics are, they're undeniable. There's a double reduction in accidents utilizing this type of treatment at intersections such as this, and sometimes more. For example, just up north, the R-cut at Insaluda has seen a 76% reduction in accidents there. So it is extremely effective, and I think we would all agree that that's worth it, to save people's lives and to avoid accidents at this intersection. That's our ultimate goal. Period. I will. I will.
Update by Ms. Carol Steele.
Yes, Mr. Beach couldn't be here tonight. We were sort of tag teaming.
We were sort of tag teaming this anyway. So I'll speak on his behalf. It's a brief report, but for the members of the public, um, as a reminder that there will be another discussion on broadband, broadband in a different way later on in the meeting. This broadband update is dealing with Open Broadband, who, um, made a presentation to the board and we discussed, uh, at the retreat. And, uh, board members felt it would be a good idea to share some of that information again with the public. The board requested that Open Broadband come back and be here for the January meeting and we have sent that request. As you all know, I had asked for information on, um, a tower, they're trying, they are proceeding with arrangements to use the tower that is, they refer to it as Campground Tower. And that's the Verizon Tower, um, near the Thousand Trails Campground. And nothing, uh, additional has happened. I was going to say, as y'all are aware, I asked for an update on whether that would mean that the tower on, across from Beaver Dam six oh six would not be needed. And I have yet to hear, um, from the report that I asked for, for last Thursday. So I asked for it again today for tonight and I did not get a response. We, I think the public needs to know that the board and the staff are very frustrated with this company, but we also know that, um, if things, we're, we're so far along that it's, I think the decision was to try to keep it going at the same time as looking at other avenues, which I am more optimistic about, that we'll talk about later in the meeting tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things I did in my career, something called a vendor audit, and I would take a team of finance professionals along with me and I'd head up the team and we'd go down there and analyze vendors who would supply goods and services to new for new ship. And we could tell based on analyzing their financial statements whether or not they were a viable company on that. Coupled with that, we would also get a Dun &amp; Bradstreet report on the company to make sure that they were fiscally, uh, responsible to perform on a contract. My biggest concern is, and what we heard last time, is that they bought equipment that basically is not usable, right? They've got this.
In our setting, yes.
So, and we gave them federal and federal, I believe, federal monies to pay for that. I predict this company's going to go belly up. They're not going to finish this job. They're going to go and, and bankrupt themselves because now they have to buy, rebuy new equipment, uh, that I think they don't have the funding for. So I'm, I'm just predicting that and so just want everybody to beware that we may face that situation in the near future.
Any more questions, comments? Okay. We'll move to citizen comment period. If you come up, state your name and magisterial district and please limit it to three minutes, please.
I will do my best. Good evening, Ms. Steele, Mr. Gibson, members of the board. Uh, my name is Patty Brandt. I live in Petsworth District. I am about a half a mile from this cursed intersection. And, uh, I'm not a public speaker, so please forgive me for having to look at notes. I put this together mostly to talk to the board and then I realized most of my comments are directed at this man right here. The accident that we had on October twenty-ninth with the motorcycle, a lot of us took it personally. Every time we hear of an accident at that intersection, we're all going, where's my husband? Where's my kids? Where's my brother? Every time, every time. And we're, I, I know everybody in here is tired of it. We're just, we've, we're up to, we're past up to here and I bring it right back to you from B, VDOT. I didn't want to call you Mr. Knight, I want to call you Mr. VDOT. I can work with that a little bit easier.
Ms. Brandt, I understand you need to direct this a little bit.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This motorcycle accident, it was the second fatal accident in a year. October ninth, twenty twenty-two, same incident, car comes flying through there, hit somebody broadside. That guy was dead before rescue got there. Now here we go again, another fatality. The meeting at Petsworth School. VDOT made it very clear to me, they had no interest in doing a light. I couldn't understand why. Why do you want to spend five million dollars when one million dollars would give us a light? Which is what everybody in here wants. If we have to have something, which we obviously need something. Nobody that lives out there wants to deal with an R turn. Because in my opinion, an R turn does not help you get across. Now you're going to have us make a right turn and with our rearview mirror, we're going to move two lanes to the left to get to a brand new left turn lane to make a U-turn. I don't understand how that's any safer. I really don't understand and I'm not so sure that I believe your statistics and what kind of intersections they worked at. We now have three businesses at that intersection and every one of us that lives out there, we saw this coming when Dollar General came. And I have nothing personal against Dollar General, but that's three businesses on one intersection. And sometimes when these accidents happen, we can hear it from our house. In fact, my husband heard the one, we were outside doing yard work. I went inside, he was outside when that fellow from Saluda got broadsided and he's dead. He's dead before anybody got there to help him. That's how close we are to that intersection. Three businesses, there's a problem there. Okay, so what I really come down to is we have a problem and it needs a quick solution, one that's going to work and one that the people who live out there are going to have to deal with. I, I personally do not understand how in our turn, putting us, moving across traffic, we need something to help us get across the traffic. And that's something that we're trying to navigate. Now I'm going north to go south and I have to use my rearview mirror and my side mirror to get to the far left for a brand new left turn lane. I don't see how that's safer. I really don't. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, anyway, um, Mr. Russo, who was the one that died, traveled all over the country with that motorcycle, that very same motorcycle. He dies at our corner, even Toronto. I saw a picture of when they were getting ready to go to Toronto, bam, he's killed at our intersection, the same one that we have been begging for help to resolve that. And for my last comment, I would like to introduce to you Pastor Susan Boyd, who I was fortunate enough to find when I was looking for reaching out to the Russo family when this happened. Miss, um, Ms. Boyd is a personal friend of theirs and I am glad that she came to this meeting. Not only to talk to you, but to talk to you. Thank you.
Hi. I am Susan Boyd and I'm in the Petsworth District, um, and I live on Marlfield Road. And I had text, I guess, uh, I text, uh, the supervisors, one of you, and I'm sorry, but I texted one of you and who, uh, told me to talk to Mr. McKnight, which I did. But I just want to stay on point because I know only have three minutes and I don't want to be rude. But I am, I used to be, now I'm retired and aid on the school bus for Gloucester County and I was, um, for special needs and just loved doing it. But the word on the street was, we're going to get something here, we're going to get this straight because it, we know it's dangerous. And I kept hearing that and I thought, oh yeah, they're going to do it because, you know, Gloucester's on it. I mean, they, they, we, we're a pretty safe little community, I think. So I just knew it was going to happen, you know, I just trusted it was just going to, you know, be done. That was years ago. Then my friend, Jack Russo, was senselessly killed there on the twenty-ninth and I'm just, I don't, I didn't need to bring, but anyway, he's a real person and I've knew him for almost thirty years. There he is. And his wife is amazing and a miracle and they are just the best people, you would love them and they would, they're just tremendous and, uh, friends for a long time. And it really, it was in my county and they had considered maybe possibly moving here because we're here. They'd come and visit our church and Jack played the guitar and we just, uh, I'm sorry, we would, uh, just, you know, love the Lord and, uh, he's did so many things. He and his wife helped kids. He's just a great community guy, you know, and, and do things with kids. And we'd, we traveled together, a, a group of us with Joy Ministries and we'd see people's lives being changed. And he'd come here, like I said, to Gloucester at our church and, and, uh, he, he, we would pray for people and just love people. And so I called and I wanted to find out what was going on and to be real honest, I'm going to be, when I came in here tonight, I thought, well, gee, to our supervisors, I thought, you guys got to kind of get on it here. Because I thought that something was turned down from Mr. McKnight because I'd spoken to him and I thought that we just kind of shut him down. I'm probably not making this clear, but I've got a little letter here that he very nicely sent me, thank you. And, um, and I thought that we kind of shut something down, but it doesn't seem that way at all. It seems that we're trying to get something to go and it's just taken a real long time. That's what it seems to me. But what, okay, so we said, we're all concerned about safety. True, we all are concerned about safety, but it needs to be done. It's been years and I am passionate about this now especially, um, because I know somebody who was just killed there on October the twenty-ninth. And it doesn't need to keep on and it needs to be done. I mean, we can talk about beautifying things and doing potholes and I know those things are important, but people are, you know, this is wrong. And I can't believe that my friend visited Gloucester and he's no longer with us. So I'm just, this is my question. Why isn't this being done? What do I have to do? I will do, I, what do I have to do? And why isn't it safe? And it's been too long, it's been many, many years. And like I said, we're a beautiful county, I love Gloucester, but this really hurts. And can I ask one more question? If, I don't know if this is legal, but I just received a text from my friend Angela, who is a miracle. That's his wife and she's living and we're going to the funeral next weekend. I don't, this isn't anything bad because she's a wonderful lady. Would I be allowed, it's just a minute to play this? Is that against all the law, the rules?
I mean, I don't think that you can play it. I don't know if, it would probably be just for us.
Okay. I'll ju- I'll just, real quick, and I, let me turn it on, so hopefully I know what I'm doing.
Don't let anybody else die needlessly at this intersection. My husband's death should be the last.
I, I guess you heard that, my husband's death should be the last. She's a great lady, these are great people. I'm sure that you all know great people too, but this is passion, I am passionate and I want to know if I can do whatever, I'll be glad to do it because it really, this is my county too and our neighborhood. We need to get together and do something and I'm just going to be honest. I think it's, I think sometimes maybe it might be a money issue because if a million dollars will do a light and we got to do five million, I mean, I, I saw all of the dirt. Okay. Yeah. I've seen all the things happen. I know the rivets in the road. I know that we have gotten the dirt down and, you know, things like that. We've even put a stop sign in the middle so that we'll stop, but it's still happening. So let's do something. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Adelaide Slemager, I'm in the Petsworth District. Yes, this intersection is a problem, but we can't fix stupid. There's no pill, no liquid and no duct tape for it. There is just pure negligence at that intersection. By the grace of God, yes, they put the rumble strips on seventeen. Seventeen is not the problem. It is the side road. It is six-ten on, uh, Davenport and six-ten on, uh, Woods Crossroads, crossing back and forth. And yes, I'm prejudiced by all means. I did not approve of Dollar General going there. They should have been made to enter and exit off of seventeen. That is your problem, people darting back and forth. The problem there is you're coming down seventeen, the traffic is sporadically distanced. So you've got this little impatient soul sitting here that after a few minutes, he's just going to dart across and they don't stop in the median. That our turn is not going to fix this. If they're going to hit somebody darting straight across, how much patience do you think they're going to have when they turn right, get into the left-hand lane, then they got to make a U-turn? They're going to be less patient than they are now. Not only that, you've got Mr. Luke Evans, who's sitting in here tonight. You've got, uh, I can stand here tonight, name a hundred farmers, loggers, school bus drivers. You think about all these people making a right-hand turn, quickly darting to the left lane to make a U-turn when they're already impatient. When with the help of VDOT and our wishes, and we should be listened to, it's our taxpayers' money, but like Mr. Knight told us at the last meeting, only gas taxes paid his salary. But the red light will cause them to stop. And no, it's not going to fix everything because nothing in this county is going to fix everything. You're still going to have an accident, you're still going to have a problem occasionally, but nothing like we have now. And our turn is going to give you two points for accidents, not just one that we have now, but two. Not only that, for those of us that live up there, it is going to make our response time for nine-one-one and emergencies at least eight minutes longer. We don't have that sometimes. Every one of you have used that intersection at one time or the other. Those of us that live in the far end of the county, we don't have that extra nine minutes, eight minutes for the nine-one-one calls. And it is a dangerous intersection, but this R turn is not the answer. I appreciate more than you'll ever know, Ashley Crisco and Mr. Gibson have backed us a hundred percent. As spokesperson for the neighborhood, I thank you and I beg you to continue backing us because this R turn is going to cause us more deaths, more accidents and cost us, in an economy that we don't have, an extra four million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Mark Hutchins and I'm in the Petsworth District. And I had spoken out before in favor of the R cut back in May. I'm, uh, sorry to hear of the death of Mr. Jack John Russo. I'm heartened tonight to hear that his wife Angela is back home. I know she was in critical care after the accident, so thankful that she's healed and, uh, back at home. But, uh, understand she's lost her husband. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding on this R cut. I'm a layperson, but I have studied it very carefully. I did hear earlier tonight that a similar R cut north of us in Saluda reduced, uh, problems, accidents there by approximately seventy-six percent. That's what I heard. So the information is telling us that these R cuts are effective in reducing fatalities, uh, and, and, and reducing injuries. Uh, they, they work. If you look around and I have, this is not new to our area of Virginia. There are states throughout the country, different transportation offices, not all called VDOT, of course, that have adopted these. These are not new by any stretch of the imagination and they are effective. They work. Now, a couple of things I'd like to address because this has come up before. It's my understanding that the R cut will not adversely impact our local businesses that we support, some of whom are here tonight representing. We, we care for them, we support them and we don't want them harmed. But I understand assurances have been provided that this R cut project will not harm our local businesses. So very pleased to hear that. I think another misconception that I continue to hear is that simply that we're impatient. And I know we're impatient, it's something we can all work on. But as I understand it, the challenge is getting across four- But as I understand it, the challenge is getting across four lanes of traffic with people going 60 and 60-plus miles an hour. I don't know if any of you have ever gone to a batting cage at a, a park and sat there while the pitching machine threw you a ball at 60 miles an hour? Boy, you can hardly blink and that ball is by you before you can swing your bat. Yet we're asking drivers every day, us neighbors, to cross those lanes and do it quickly and with just seconds to make that decision. The R-cut will take those two sets of lanes and separate them so we don't have to run across both to make a safe turn. So thank you very much for your concern and I appreciate what you do for the county. And it's very clear you care about making this a safer community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins.
Hi, I'm Marion Sherman. I live off Fiddler's Green Road, so, um, I used to live in Petsworth district and I lived there for three years. And the three years, we lived, we moved, you know, Indiana before, but we moved to Gloucester. And we were, in the three years we were there, in the intersection, there was probably at least, if not, one or two accidents every week or every other week. And it was just, it's like you don't even want to go down that road because it's just, it's dangerous. It's so dangerous. And I wanted to say, Jack Russo is also a friend of mine. And when this happened, it got very personal. I mean, it was personal before because, I mean, I don't see anybody killed at an intersection. You come up on that and you see that, you know, it's horrible. It's a horrible sight to see anybody killed at an accident. And I actually ran into, um, a first responder that was at the accident. And, you know, she was, I just want to say, first responders are amazing here. They have excellent care for people in that, and who, any intersection that somebody's killed. But, um, with Jack, it's personal. It's, it makes me sad because actually I've been up in Norfolk right now. I was taking care of his wife for a little bit. I was helping take care of her. Well, and, and to see her, the grievance on her face is horrible, you know, to see anybody. And I just want to say, you know, I, even before this happened, we had talked about putting a, you know, asking for a light and we didn't know how to go about it. And so now I have my chance to say it and, um, I just, you know, it would be an amazing thing to have a light up there. I don't know, I'm not professional. I don't know what a R-turn is, but I know that a light is a simple fix. And not only that, but I, I live off Fiddler's Green Road and they put that new turn signal in, whatever turn lane right there. And to cause like less traffic or something, I don't know. I know you talked about it, but that has caused actually more traffic because you can't turn. I mean, you can stop at the stop sign, light, but the prob, like to get people through there. And so you can't turn when you're stopped at the stop sign. So it didn't, you know, everybody's still sitting there. So and it's causing traffic back up and it's a frustrating thing every day. And, um, I just wanted to say that. I'm not gonna take the full three minutes, but I, I just want to thank you guys for hearing me out and considering the light and whatever else you have to do to make it safe around here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Carpenter, Petsworth district. I haven't gotten any better at speaking in front of people, so I apologize if I'm nervous. I've been reviewing the PowerPoint presentation that was given to you all back in February. And I'm just asking questions, not directly, just hoping we can get information. Has, are the numbers still the same? Like the, the crash information is from 2017 to 2022? Um, if I remember correctly, we were in a pandemic for part of that. So there was a lower number, a significantly lower number of vehicles traveling, um, which would significantly decrease the number of crashes that we would have had and fatalities. Will there be a new five-year study done or without a pandemic in the middle to get a more accurate picture of the crashes, the traffic, the fatality? And I implore you to go to that intersection when Petsworth school was lined up on 17, backing up traffic, trying to slow down for a school zone and then come back to go home right behind, um, right, we're behind Addie's store, but, um, it's not safe. And in our turn, blocks your view down the road, you're adding left turns, which according to this, one of the reasons for the R-cut is to reduce the, the L, uh, the left-hand turns. You're adding two left turns and a right turn. And we're still crossing four lanes of traffic, whether you have to stop in between them or not. Nobody has even brought up Addie's store this evening. Yes, we love Addie, but right now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Can you face the mic too?
Yeah. I just, I know I can't ask y'all questions. Nobody brought up Addie's store tonight. That's not why we're here. We love Addie. We want her business to stay in business, but this is about safety. You're adding turns and the data is not accurate. I don't know if everybody here knows it, but the crash rate is per 1 million vehicles. So if you do the math, they're just throwing numbers at you to make it look good for them. So I just asked you guys to please do your research. My daughter drove by when that man was lying dead under the front of that car. Watched it with her own eyes. If any of you have family and if, she's 12 years old. And she hear, we can hear the crashes. We can hear the sirens. And now my kids, did someone else die? Did someone else die? Is Addie okay? Is so-and-so okay? It's not just the adults that are in pain over the safety issue up there. So for me, this right here is about the safety. It's about our community. It's about doing what's right. And that's, I just look at the numbers. They need to redo the study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Luke Evans, Portland, I'm Petsworth district. I live right at Woodstock Road and I drive big trucks. I go through that intersection every day. The way it is right now, I can't put my truck in the median because I stick out in the oncoming lanes. So I have to gauge it correctly to get through the intersection, to be able to stop and continue. With the R-cuts, I'm gonna even have harder times making U-turns to go opposite directions. And it's gonna make it even harder to get in traffic when they're going 60-plus miles an hour and you're dead stop and you have to catch gears to get into traffic at the speed they're traveling. And with more left turns and you're still gonna have the turn at our intersection, it's a dangerous idea. We need a stoplight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
I hadn't originally planned on speaking. My name is Eddie Brant, Patty Brant's husband, live in the Petres, Petsworth district. And while we heard a lot of, uh, the compassion having to do with this intersection, I wanted to bring up a couple of points that have to do with basic engineering. The intersection is not a 90-degree intersection. The intersection is skewed like an X like this instead of being square. So if I'm leaving the Route 610, whether I'm going north or whether I'm going across, okay? Your car is this way and you have to look out the back to see traffic coming. Okay? That's part of the problem, but that's not the main reason for these accidents at the, at the intersection. Because the, the real culprit is the cars, even if they're doing everything right, what they'll do is they'll sit there and the oncoming traffic is obscured from the A-pillar. So you have a person that doesn't see any traffic, they pull out and the traffic is there, they just don't see it and there's, nobody has a chance to do anything. So the issue that I have with the R-turn is that they will be unregulated. There will be no traffic lights. There will be no, no supreme power, meaning a traffic light saying, okay, it's time to go, it's time to stop, it's time to go, it's time to stop. So what you have is a case where you're relying on people's own abilities or lack thereof to make a spur-of-the-moment decision as to whether or not it's safe to go. Whereas if you have a traffic light and you do not allow left turn on green or on red, the flashing yellow, make people sit there and wait. The other thing the traffic light will do is people downstream in both directions will know that there's a traffic light, they'll be able to see the traffic light. It's either red, green or yellow. If it's yellow, they get a chance to anticipate, slow down. Okay? So basically, the R-turn is gonna take what's going on at that intersection and divide it into two different locations. With the exception of the people that just shoot straight across and those people, there's no hope for them. Okay? You can't make a law that is gonna prevent them from doing that. But a traffic light would. And, um, that's basically all I got to say. It has more to do with the layout of the intersection. And if you look at the other R-turns, they're probably more square. So, um, that was my input. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Holland. Um, I'm in the Petsworth district. I actually live at the corner of 17 and own that shop. Been, ever since I moved in, all I heard was good luck. Have fun with cars in your front yard. They weren't lying. I've pulled, uh, the last 13 months we've been there, about at least 12 accidents, I'd say. And been present for, I thank God, we missed the last one where there was a fatality. Me and my family weren't home. I got two small children. So, uh, thank God we missed that one. It's terrible what happened. I just see crash after crash after crash, going up to the car, people are bleeding. It's just crazy that nothing's been done. You're, people are fighting over our turn and, uh, you know, a traffic light and it's like, I, I'm just saying, the traffic light's gonna be quicker. Put the traffic light in, do another study. If it doesn't work, at least we tried and then go to the R-turn. I just don't see why it's this complicated. I've been in Gloucester since 2017 when I got stationed out here and I've been in that side of the county. Just doesn't make sense. Just simplify it, try it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Go to the next thing. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Hall. I'm also in Petsworth district. I live on Woodstock Road, which is right off of Davenport. I use that intersection daily to go to work. I work across the bridge. I come home to try and even make a left turn. I've got traffic on my butt doing 70 mile an hour. I'm afraid to even slow down to make that turn. An R-cut is not going to work. I lived in Saluda when they put the R-cut by the Food Lion. You don't have residences on both sides of that highway. You've got a grocery store. It's totally different. It's not the same scenario whatsoever. With the R-cut, if I come out of my street on 17 and make it right and then have to make a U-turn and then I'm gonna slow down to turn into Dollar General, I'm gonna get smacked. Somebody's gonna hit me. Again, with the, the first responders, with the emergency vehicles. If your house is on fire, do you want that fire truck to have to go an extra quarter mile and hang a U-turn and come down there? It just doesn't make any sense. People say, well, there's accidents at other traffic, like, traffic lights in the county. Well, if traffic lights don't work, take them all out then. But they make a difference. They make a big difference. And we are just asking to be heard. I don't know why VDOT thinks that they are above the taxpayers of this state. They need to listen. We're just looking for some answers. We don't want anyone else to be hurt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward?
Could I say anything else after you're all done?
It'll be up to the chair to whether it repeats or after everyone else.
Okay, I just didn't know. I have just one question.
I am Catherine Carter, Sioux juris from the Abington district. I have two issues you trustee servants that agents need to address immediately. The county manager announced during the meeting prior to the vote on the referendum November 7th, 2023, that funding the new fire department building was not dependent on passing the referendum. Yet announced post-referendum failure that there is no funding for the proposed fire department. It seems from the conflicting and congruent report on funding the fire department facility, the financial state of Gloucester County supported by we the people has not been handled according to the Constitution of Virginia Bill of Rights that each of you is in contract to carry out. Section 15, qualities necessary to preservation of free government. Clause one states that no free government nor the blessings of liberty could be preserved to any people but by a firm adherent to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality and virtue by frequent recourse to fundamental principles. So I am placing a FOIA request for the Gloucester County border supervisors to publish an easily accessible statement on the county website with spreadsheet evidence and a sworn no device affidavit by the county manager proving the statement and evidence are accurate. One, to show the funds available for the fire department facility were available prior to the referendum back up what the county manager told the people. And two, to show evidence on the Gloucester County border supervisors' website with a second spreadsheet after, after November 7th, 2023 referendum failure as evidence how the fire department funding for the new facility was expended. My second statement, Gloucester County border supervisors continues to restrain for, excuse me, that's not a true statement tonight. Okay. But also refusing to allow the public in a simple request to be on their county agenda. And when that is restored, then we will have free government here at the border supervisors. Also, um, the second issue is the Gloucester County School Board on the unlawful September 15th, 2023 school board meeting prohibited any public comment. Where they, the rights of the people were egregiously usurped. Usurpation or freedom of speech places both the Gloucester County School Board and the border supervisors in danger of maladministration violating Constitution of Virginia Articles 1, Section 3, 12 and 15. I'm instructing the Gloucester County border supervisors to enter my public comments unabridged and verbatim into the minutes to appear in full at the next meeting as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
My name is Diane Jones and I'm in the Ware district and have to say goodbye to my representative. and have to say goodbye to my representative, who actually has been easy to communicate with, I must say. I guess, I don't know if I should address you or the gentleman from VDOT, but I would like to prevent a school bus accident by reiterating the problem that I already expressed to him. Warehouse Road intersects with Edgehill Street, which is the corner where my house is. And the school bus now, instead of going down Warehouse Road at six-thirty in the morning when it's dark, they come down Edgehill Street. The, where you turn right on Warehouse Road to get to the schools, they repaired the road years ago and did not prepare it engineeringly correct. It is very easy to drop off. The school board, the school bus is even larger than the cars. We have to kind of go this way to get across, to get around that thing. The school bus now comes down there at six-thirty in the morning. And she has had to swing around, and the other morning, she almost went into the ditch across the street. Almost, but not quite. But nonetheless, that part of the street needs to be fixed properly so that, I mean, I lived here for years before they fixed it, and you could go right across, take a right on Warehouse and not have any trouble. And whoever repaired the road did not prepare it correctly. So if the proper engineer could address that, I think we could prevent a school bus accident. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Susan Austin from the Ware District. For the past six months or more, our county administrator and five Board of Supervisors members have urged us to incur a large thirty-five million dollar plus debt in order to build a new firehouse, make upgrades to another firehouse, upgrade an elementary school, even though they tell us that the money for this is already in the bank. But the money would also be spent on improvements to existing parks, bathrooms, lights, miscellaneous, and waterfront facilities. The county, the people in this county voted down the referendum. We were told the new firehouse could still be built since the money was already in the bank, whatever that means. All other improvements would still be built because it was more economical to improve them now than kick the can down the road in subsequent years. Now, this, this next statement I'm gonna make is, is still confusing to me. We have been told in the last Board of Supervisors meeting that there is no money for a new firehouse or improvements for the schools? I'm, I'm very confused, and, you know, I wish you could answer me because nobody's been able to, to answer this question I have. How come all of a sudden we have no money when we've told the fire, the firemen that they were going to have a new firehouse regardless of whether this referendum was passed or not? I'm not understanding something here. Not sure what it is, whether somebody has been lying to us about this or there's some sleight of hand in the accounting? I just don't understand. I understand that the state audits the firehouse, the fire duties, and I'm not sure who audits the rest. I know they take turns auditing different pots of money every once in a while, but there is something fishy that I don't understand. I wish somebody could please help me understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Would anyone? Would anyone else like to speak? I'll, come on.
Just one thing that, I had to, one thing I wanted to clarify. Ms. Russo is not home yet. After spending almost a week in ICU at Riverside Regional, she was then transferred to a hospital over in Norfolk closer to her family. And it is just recently that she has been moved to a rehab facility. She has got a ways to go before she can go home. The other thing is, I beg you guys, please do something and do it quickly. This other lady, I don't know her, her name, but when she said, "Put the light in. If it doesn't work, then go to an R-turn system." I remember asking the VDOT lady at the Petsworth thing that they had. I, I asked her specifically, I said, "What happens if you don't, if you put in an R-turn and it doesn't work?" And without hesitation, she just said, "Then you get a light." Really? That's the plan? We need something there quickly. I don't want one more death. I don't understand the hesitation. You'll save money if a light works? I don't understand where the problem is. And I really wish someone would set that straight. Because it's like, we're all on notice. Two deaths in one year, that's enough. No more. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? Mr. Presley?
Chair, I'm gonna take about two minutes. I'm, I'm gonna take my supervisor hat off because I'm gonna talk to everybody here as a citizen regarding the Woods Cross Road issue. When the accident happened, my daughter lives in Gloucester County, and even though she doesn't live anywhere near Woods Cross Road, whenever you hear that there's a death or brutality in Gloucester County, first thing my wife and I did was call our daughter. Because who knows if she was out on the road? So we just, we just kind of were a little concerned about that. So my question, Mr. Knight, I'm, I'm not gonna address you, but I would like you to take my comments to VDOT. Because this is nothing personal against you, it's just my, my comments. So what is a life worth to VDOT? It is not fair. Let me just continue my discussion, please. Mr. Gibson provided a petition with over six hundred people in the Petsworth District that wanted this stoplight installed at the crossroads. You could have easily reduced the speed limit, put the stoplight in, and the problem would have gone away. If, if, if R-cuts are so safe, let's just install R-cuts all along Seventeen for left-hand turns. Why not? They're supposed to be seventy-six percent safer, right? Doesn't make any sense to me. You've had meetings with this board, and I would venture to guess if I polled this board right now, they'd probably vote to put a, put a stoplight at that intersection. I, I'd like VDOT to stop the jobs program because you're spending five million dollars to study an R-cut versus a cheaper method to save a life using a stop sign. And, and I say, stop the design work, stop the jobs program, stop the environmental studies. I mean, after all, we don't wanna, and I'm being sarcastic here, we want to protect the snails and the frogs, and I'm sure that VDOT, VDOT has that environmental concern right now. But, but my goodness, common sense has to prevail here. One life is too much. Two lives is just horrendous. We're seeing what's going on overseas in Israel, all the lives that are being lost over there. We're losing lives in our county. So, and I certainly hope that someone who was involved with Smart Scale doesn't get involved in a car accident at Woods Cross Road. Because that's, that's, they're gonna find out that Smart Scale's not so smart, it's actually stupid. And as one individual said, you just can't fix stupid. So those are my comments as a citizen, not as a board member. Thank you.
Are there any? Anyone else like to speak? All right, we'll close this and comment period. But no public hearings, we'll move to the regular agenda. Next item is a presentation of fiscal year 2023 audit and resolution accepting the report of the independent auditor fiscal year 2023. Yeah, let's just, we'll wait while Maria's handing stuff out. What's that? Yeah, I think we will. Keep going. Carol, you need one, right? Hey, Tony. Need one more.
Good evening. Um, I'm not gonna need the presentation quite yet. I'm just gonna introduce Aaron. Good evening.
Ma'am, y'all can come through this way. We'll wait a second. It'll save you a couple steps. All right, Ms. Callaway.
All righty. So this evening, we're here to provide the update of the final FY 2023 audit. So we have tonight the, our audit partner, Erin Hawkins from Robinson Farmer Cox, who's gonna give you a, an overview of the audit. I've provided, handed out the final bound copies to each of you. And then after Mr. Hawkins presents, I'm gonna give you just a brief, I have a very quick slideshow to show you a comparison of the audited results to what I previously presented in September.
Good evening, everyone. I'm hoping everyone can hear me okay. I'm, I'm hoping, maybe we don't have enough reports, but for those of you that do, I'll be highlighting a few areas that I think are key places to talk about, and then open the floor for any questions. Talked about the audit process in general. I thought it went very well, very smoothly. It's a long process. It starts probably back in the spring, around April, we start doing our planning for the audit. And we come and do our preliminary work in May or June, and then we come back in the fall and, and do our final field work. And then somewhere in between there, we do some school activity fund audits for the school board. But huge compliment to Maria Callaway, Joyce Cleavens, folks at the school board as well. County's very lucky to have Maria. Hard worker, very organized, always willing to learn new things. Couldn't, can't, can't be happier with having her there as the finance director and, and getting us to this point to be able to present to you here. And this report that is getting thicker by the year that we come here. But, and a lot of that Maria does, more than any of my other clients, in terms of being able to help prepare the financial statements. So I'm gonna start off with a page that I have flagged on page one. It's the place that I always start, and it's actually, you have these tabs on the side. So there's the financial section tab. After that, there's the page one. And that is our auditor's report. And within that is our opinion on the financial statements, which says that based on our testing, these statements can be relied upon to be materially correct. You'll also see on page, page one, there's a change in accounting principles. A new GASB standard went into effect this year. I think I talked to you guys a little bit about a standard that went into effect last year on leases and how they were gonna be treated differently going forward. This was very similar to that standard last year as it related to your subscription-based IT arrangements. And, and those agreements that you have that go for a period of time, and how you, and how you recognize the future payments that are gonna be made on that. And so, and I think you, I think the county had one, one arrangement that had to be implemented this year under that new standard. On page five is the MDNA, Management's Discussion and Analysis. And I always like to point this out because it's, it's, for one thing, it's prepared by finance. And I also think it's probably the portion of this report that puts things into a perspective that a lot of people can understand that, that aren't CPAs and governmental auditors. There's a lot of information in here that talks about why these numbers were the way that they were this year. This was the number this year, last year, and why. And, and as opposed to a lot of things that follow this, there are a lot of, you know, terminology that, that, as I mentioned, probably only a CPA would, would be able to truly understand a lot of it. But on page twenty-three is my next page that I have flagged primarily just because I like to point out what fund balance is. I feel like, you know, the board is usually, and I'm sure you are already aware of your fund balance, but just to show it within the report. Page twenty-three, you can see your governmental funds, and that first column is your general fund. And you began the year with about twenty-nine point nine million dollars in your general fund balance, ended the year about thirty-two point two million. So an increase of about two point three million dollars in your general fund balance for the year. I'm now gonna flip way far ahead into this report, into the compliance section tab, mainly because this is where you see our name, Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, pop up again on some reports that we have included at the end of the report. And on page two eighteen, this is our report that we have to do based on the internal control testing and compliance work that we have to do for auditing the county. And basically, you know, we do diff, we have to do various internal control testing as well as state compliance, and if we had findings, we would have to report those here, which we do not have any findings to report. And then on page two twenty is our report and opinion on our, on our federal audit within Uniform Guidance, which is your single audit for the county. And we had no findings to report there either. This year, we had to test, this is actually on the last page, on two twenty-seven. You'll see the programs that we had, we had to test several this year, actually, federal programs. The Education Stabilization Fund, which is also called ESER program at the school board. The twenty-one oh two seven, that is, it says coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, otherwise known as ARPA. Ten point five six one is your SNAP, food stamp program, child nutrition cluster at the school board, as well as special education cluster. So we were quite busy doing some federal compliance work as well this year. So that is my very, I guess, somewhat brief path through the financial statements. Glad to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your brief presentation. Very well done. So basically, you audit the books and records of, the financial books and records of the county, right? That's just basically as far as you go to make sure that all the T-accounts are, are added up and balanced, if the, if the, the balance sheet works, there's the balance of zero between assets and liabilities and stockholders, well, there's no stockholders here anyway. That does, that apply, doesn't apply here. But, but you don't audit processes in the, the county, the operational processes in the county that, that, that feed the financial statements that you are auditing here. Do you not? Do you, do you look at the processes?
I mean, we, we perform tests of internal controls for various processes.
That's financial.
Financial. So you mean like, so non-financial processes?
Yes, processes that, that feed into our financial statements. Maybe there's a process that could possibly be inefficient. You'll say, hey, if you do it a little bit different, I know, I know what the answer is already. You don't do that, but that's okay.
I guess I wonder what the example would be.
Well, let's say, let's say that the, let's say that, just pick a department. I'm just picking it, social services. I mean, everything they do. Do you look at their processes to make sure that they're spending taxpayer dollars efficiently? Because, you know, most businesses have an internal audit department, aside from their external auditors that come in and audit the financial statements. Because any company does that.
Your example, and we, we, we definitely test expenditures within social services. We make sure there's case action forms to dictate they're paying, who they're supposed to be paying, as well as, in certain cases, invoices and things. as well as, in certain cases, invoices and things like that.
I, I understand that, but my, 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 my comment is that you don't actually audit the efficiency of that spending, and whether it's proper, you know, or not, you don't do that.
Well, proper, I do. Now, as, in terms of like, management decisions, why we, I don't know. If you're asking if I perform any management decisions, no, I don't do that.
That, that's all I had, I just wanted to make that comment. I, I do think that Maria is an asset to this county, a tremendous asset to this county. And she's done an exceptional job of doing what she does with the books and records of this county, and so. But it would be nice if we had an internal audit department that audited our processes, that then would then couple to what you need to look at as far as our financial statements. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Any more questions? So, Mr. Hawkins, you said that based on other counties, Ms. Callaway and her staff does a much better job make, doing this book for you, makes your life a whole lot easier?
So, I do have one county that they do prepare their financial statements in full. So, that was a bit of a, I did overlook that, but in terms of all my, so I probably audit eight or nine counties, I would say for seven of them, I'm doing all of, all of this, all of this. And I would say Maria's probably doing 75% of the work on that.
So, our bill is considerably lower than yours.
Exactly.
Good point. So it is.
I, it did, yeah, I would say it's worked until what we estimate our cost is gonna be.
Okay. We'll look at that. Ms. Callaway.
We'll check for the efficiency operation right now.
Any more questions? Thank you.
No, thank you all, thanks for having me, have a Merry Christmas, appreciate it.
We appreciate the partnership.
I'm wondering if my available hour gets to go up.
Yours is set.
So I'm gonna, Trish is gonna bring up a PowerPoint, it's only four slides, so I will be brief.
That should be the new limit.
Four slides.
Except for budget, Carol, you, you're not off the hook.
We'll give you six. Double.
Front back.
Sorry to set that standard, Carol. Alright, so. I believe you all have these slides as well at your places. So, I wanted to give just an overview of the general fund. The far left column, after the title column, the, under the actual results, the unaudited is what I presented to you in September. Audited is circled there in red, and you can see that I was within about 1% of the ending fund balance there. The reason for the change in expenditures there of the $320,000 is mostly attributable to the new accounting standard that was implemented this year that Erin mentioned. So, the next slide is just a, an over, more of a detail of that number. So what is that, 32 million of total fund balance, how is that broken out? So, and then again, we have the unaudited on the left, audited final numbers on the right. So, as you can see, the number that everybody, you know, obviously we're most focused on is that unassigned fund balance. So, we expected that to be 29.67 million, and it's 29.4 is the final audited figure. So, as you'll remember, we do have several appropriations already of that unassigned fund balance. And the next slide is going to move into that calculation and what we have actually available. So, just as a reminder, there are three main groups of allocations already of that 29 million unassigned fund balance. 4.5 was included in the FY 24 adopted budget. We've appropriated 146,000 for carryovers of ongoing projects. And then lastly, the 566,000 that was appropriated to social services last month. So, that makes up a total of about 5.26 billion. So, moving to the next slide, this gives us the full calculation of the fund balance policy. So, this, the, this calculation starts with the adopted budgeted governmental expenditures. That's also a number that we use in our calculation for our debt policy. So, the 138 million at the top is then reduced by the portion that's funded by bond proceeds, because we wanna weed out anything that's not funded with government dollars. And then that leaves us with our policy between 14% and 16%. So, that's, the 14 is the 18.83 million. The green box there is the 16 million, which is our upper limit, 16 million, 16%, which is our upper limit. So, if you go down to the next number, the 29.4 is that audited fund balance number. Take out all of those allocations we've already made for this year, that leaves us with 24,135. So, at the end of fiscal year '24, if no more fund balance is appropriated in fiscal year '24, we'd have about 2.6 million going into the next year to work with. And that's generally to support capital.
Thank you, Maria.
Sure.
The questions that everybody asks me, and every time I talk to them, is the question is, can we write a check today for 24,135 in cash?
Probably could.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be advised? No. But that's based on cash, so there's probably about 24 million, but that's.
But, Ms. Callaway, that's what we could have written as of June 30th.
So, that, yeah, that number is a, like, it doesn't take into consideration cash flow. So, that's a very loaded, there's a lot that goes into that, that answer there, but you're exactly right. That's a June 30 number is our fund balance. However, we have taken into consideration everything that's currently budgeted, so as long as we're monitoring that budget. Any other questions on the fund balance policy? Alright, so just to wrap it up, you know, the last time I was here, we were going into the final audit, that's completed, the presentation has now been done, we have that final report. So, I will be back in February to do a mid-year update, and that'll be much more detailed. But you're certainly welcome to, as you go over the report in your spare time, welcome to reach out to me with any questions that you have. That's all I have.
Mr. Gibson.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
Can you explain for the benefit of the public, what's the purpose of the fund balance policy, and why we have this 14% to 16% percentage as it applies to the fund balance? What, what does that mean for the benefit of the public?
So, the 14% to 16% is meant to maintain a certain level of cash to be able to fund our ongoing expenditures. So, it's, it's meant to maintain cash flow. And that was updated recently, I wanna say 2020. But, and it previously was 12% to 14%, and we ran into many, many times where we were monitoring our cash flow to the point of being concerned. So, that, that is meant to make sure that we have a comfortable amount to maintain our ongoing obligations.
And why was it raised from that lower level to the higher level? Like, what sort of potential financial problems can occur when you have cash flow problems?
Not making payroll would probably be the largest concern.
Followed by missing debt payments, right?
Debt payments, yeah, debt payments are a little bit more, I mean, they're predictable, and payroll is as well, but payroll can have a little more variation, and it comes every month.
So, it's analogous to your own checking account, right? You, you take in enough cash, you make expenditures, you don't wanna make some gross expenditures that cause you to go into the negative side, so it's just personal finance on a grander scale on the county side. So, it's just, it's a cash flow issue. Can't make payroll, then, then you're in deep trouble. Any business would know that if they can't make payroll, they either have a revolving account where they would borrow money to make payroll and pay it back the next month. But, we don't have that luxury in this county.
No.
So, that's why we have to have such a good buffer to make sure that we have, we're, you know, fiscally sound as far as going forward.
Yes, the short-term, short-term borrowing is not favorably in the local government setting, and that's a, so, we do have to operate a little bit differently than a, a business, just to ensure.
Mr. Wilmot.
Isn't another reason for having a percentage available to be able to pay unanticipated expenditures, such as fines or judgments? Some jurisdictions in the not-too recent, or not, not-too-distant past have gone bankrupt because they have not maintained a sufficient, yes, cash, store, cash amount of cash to handle unanticipated expenditures. To cut it too close to the quick, you run a significant danger in not being able to not only pay your anticipated bills, but also to pay any unanticipated expenditures. And then you might have to go bankrupt, that's not something you wanna do.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hedrick.
Yes, so for the, for the public information, if we were want, if, today we decided to write a check for 12 million to build a fire station out of the fund balance that we've looked at. That, according to my calculations, that would put us at about 9.5%
Yes.
of the fund balance. And that, you know, is the reason that I have told several people who have asked me about it, that we cannot finance a fire station with the fund balance, we just can't do it.
It would be very poor financial practice and put us at risk of not making other obligations.
But, what we could do, and that was the option presented to us by the Davenport Report, we have enough revenues coming in, in the county, to make the debt payments on the firehouse. So, that was the difference. We don't have, I mean, it's a policy that we don't wanna maintain below 16% or 17%, because that will drain us as far as cash, but we can certainly borrow. It's like, you know, you, you take in some income at home, and you wanna buy a new car, well, can we afford the payments? We don't, certainly don't have enough in savings to pay cash for the car, but we can certainly afford to make the payments. And that was the situation with the fire department, and the, the referendum not being really needed to fund the new fire department itself. So, that's basically what it was.
Mr. Gibson.
Ms. Callaway, is there a difference in the interest rates that would have been applied for the referendum funding versus interest rates that might be available now?
Likely, yes. I, I don't have the most current interest rates, but the general obligation bonds, which were what we would have used in the referendum, if the referendum passed, are generally the lowest interest obligations.
Is it, is it also true that because the referendum failed, that, that the fire department or anyone else will not have access to that low-interest loan?
Well, the, there is a, there are certain legal restrictions placed on doing, once a referendum fails, borrowing general obligation bonds, or borrowing, so we'd have to find another avenue of funding.
You'd probably have to get commercial paper to do that, then.
There, there may be other ways of using pooled financing, but the general obligation is usually considered the, the most inexpensive.
Dr. Orth. Just a quick comment, I appreciate all the information that's been provided about the fund balance, because I think it's a complicated topic for even us to understand at times, but I think it was made clear, at least for us and the citizens again, regarding that. And just as a side, I think Mr. Wilmot mentioned, I think every community, if you read the newspaper during budget times, every community, if you read the local newspaper, there's always a discussion about the fund balance. So, all these communities have that fund balance, you know, discussion, and what they can or cannot do, and the policies that relate to the purpose of that fund balance with regard to cash.
Yes, yes.
We've got a referend, I mean, a resolution.
Yes, we do.
But before we get there, Ms. Callaway, I'm impressed that from your unaudited amount to your audited amount, it was less than 1%.
Thank you.
Less than 1%. Except, when you gave the presentation, you missed this by 25% because there's five pages and not four.
Oh, no, wait a second. Are you counting the cover page?
Did you show it?
Trish did, Maria didn't.
There's a, there's a resolution on page 42 to accept the. Okay, listen. It's not your second. It's his last, so he gets a second. Ms. Steele.
Dr. Orth.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
Yes.
Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, it's actually two, gonna be two resolutions.
Correct.
For a request for additional fiscal year 2024 appropriations, Ms. Callaway.
So, this evening on page 43, I provided a brief overview of these appropriations. And as Mr. Hudson mentioned, we did break these up between, there's one resolution for the county funds, one resolution for the school funds, just trying to make sure it's understandable. And so, the county request, there's, the first one is for $5,000 for the sheriff's office. They had a $10,000 grant, it wasn't all spent, so that ended up needing to be re-appropriated this year, 5,000 of it. And that is for their Help Eliminate Auto Theft or Heat grant. So, that is the first request. And then the second is for $34,000, $34,000 in additional library state aid that we were recently notified will be receiving. So, we're asking that that be appropriated to the library budget. Do you wanna do these resolutions separately?
Yes, I think we need to.
That resolution is on.
So, that resolution's on page 44.
Yes, sir.
This is amateur hour. Okay, Ms. Steele, pull the board.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
Yes.
Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Dr. Orth. Motion carries.
Alright, the second resolution for your consideration is for the appropriation for school funds. And the first one is one that has, was already included in the public hearing. That is for the additional state revenue that will be provided to the state, to the state, to the schools. And 1.6 of that is for the new mandated tutoring program, and then 242,000 for personnel is being requested. And then, secondly, there is a request for money to be appropriated in the Central Food Service Fund, and that is, 200,000 of that is actually just a budget adjustment to make sure that we budget appropriately for federal funding in that, for the USDA commodities. And then, the 450,000 is for equipment, and that is to be used out of the fund balance. Dr. Vladu and Ms. Lucas are here, and Mr. Hartley are all here to answer any specific questions on those school resolutions.
Mr. Bizani.
Question, aside from the cafeteria fund, how much of the other funding coming from the state will be either recurring or non-recurring? Because if it's non-recurring, then we're gonna have to foot the bill for forward years.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Ms. Lucas.
Or the taxpayers will have to fund the bill for the forward years.
None of the costs for the state funding will be reoccurring. That's why we're doing the bonus proposal versus the raise, so it's not an ongoing cost to the county.
Yeah, so it'll be, it will be figured into your upcoming budget next year.
Correct, any unspent appropriation balance, any unspent balance will be built into the budget process.
Thank you.
It might have to be adjusted to close it out, but it will be built in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There's a resolution on page 45, Mr. Hedrick, would you like to make the motion?
Moves to approve the, on page 45.
Second.
88.
Ms. Steele.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
Yes.
Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Dr. Orth. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, Harbor Park discussion, and no, guys, we're not going to a baseball game. But, Dan Thomas, please, don't run away. We don't bite, not too hard.
I actually visited Harbor Park middle of the summer, and it's just an abandoned piece of property that the neighborhood does not want, but I'll let Mr. Thomas redress that.
Good evening. Through Mr. Hudson to the board, Ms. Steele, and Attorney Wilmot. I'm appearing before you this evening seeking direction regarding a vacant tract of land that heretofore has not been identified as a parcel, either taxable or non-taxable. This particular tract of land, approximately a quarter acre in size, is set in the Snug Harbor Annex section of the subdivision commonly referred to as Snug Harbor, which is located on Seraph. on Sarah Creek. The property as shown on the two attachments in your packet is set between two parcels, both of which are improved lots, and all three have frontage on the Snug Harbor portion of the Sarah Creek. It is believed, though not confirmed by any document, that the original intent of the developer was to set aside this property for use and enjoyment by property owners of the subdivision that do not have water access or frontage. This intended use would be consistent with other parcels in the subdivision that have been permanently deeded as such. The subject property, however, is not identified by any separate deed or subdivision agreement that spells out explicitly this intent. Moreover, the deed which identifies the restrictions, covenants and conditions of the parcels contained in this specific section of the subdivision omits any reference to this property whatsoever. A recent request to purchase this property by an abutting owner is the reason that this has been brought to your attention this evening. From the photograph provided in your materials, it appears this same abutting property owner maintains a good portion of the property in question, and as I understand it, wishes to repair or replace the bulkhead. The county attorney has suggested that the county has three options. First option is to do nothing. Second option is for the assessor commissioner of revenue to create parcel taxed to the previous owner who is now defunct, the Gloucester enterprise, or unknown. Taxes would go unpaid, become delinquent, and after two years, the county would then auction the property. Third option is for the county to file quitclaim deed from the county to the neighbor. And the fourth option, which would require no action from the county, would be for a neighboring property owner to pursue their own legal options such as adverse possession. This concludes my presentation. Any questions that you may have specifically with regards to the options can either be directed to myself or preferably to county attorney.
Mr. Bazani.
So since this is an undeeded piece of property in the adjacent, you can see the property owner's got some structure already encroaching into that property itself if that line is actually, is, is correct. We don't, we don't own this property and we can't say what this property is worth unless the assessor says it is worth something along with the commissioner of revenue. I would be, and unless there's an objection by the rest of the neighbors, and that would, how you cure that is by sending a letter to every member of Snug Harbor and say, you know, this is about what's going to happen to this property, do you have an objection to it? And then allow this, this property owner then to purchase the property at a reasonable fare and reasonable price. Is that something that, option number five?
Well, that would be the quitclaim option. That would be the county quitclaiming or deeding the property to whoever the county chooses to deed it to following the required public hearing, but understanding that the county doesn't own it.
Right.
And what a quitclaim means is I'm conveying to you whatever interest, if any, I may have. I may have nothing, I may have everything, but I'm deeding to you whatever interest I may have. That's a quitclaim deed. That is among the options. However, it would require a public hearing. Other people in the subdivision may express interest. There's another abutting property owner, he may want some of it. So it might not work out the way this person desires. The rec, the, the option I recommend is, I believe that all parcels in the county should be identified as parcels and should be assessed. Whether they're exempt or not is a secondary factor determination, but all land in the property should be identified. And I, I'm glad this came to light because this is a parcel, needs to be identified as a parcel and, and should be assessed. It's not tax exempt, it's not held by an HOA. So my recommendation is option number two. And the options were again, do nothing, which is easy to do, but not the right thing. Two is to identify the parcel as a parcel, assess it to its last known slash original owner, which is now defunct because of the last known owner that we are, of which we are aware. The property, the taxes go unpaid for the period of two years, the taxes, the treasurer puts it up for sale and anyone can bid on it. Again, it's, might not be the result that this neighbor wants. He having already encroached upon this property and taken care of it, but encroached upon it, any member of the public could buy it. And the third option being the quitclaim, you still have to have the public hearing and anyone could come forward and express interest in purchasing the property and the county doesn't own it. So that's a little troublesome to me. The fourth one is that, that property owner or any of the other property owners in the subdivision could pursue their own private legal recourse. And it may mean that this individual has acquired some kind of title or interest by way of adverse possession to the property. It may mean that the property owners in the subdivision want to collectively gather together to make this the parcel that perhaps was originally intended, that would allow access for the subdivision to the, to the water and, and file an appropriate action in circuit court to get that result. I cannot give these property owners private legal advice. I'm prohibited from doing that. I represent the county and the board, so I'm not going to give this individual or any other private property owner legal advice as to how to proceed in the fourth option. But an attorney worth his salt could probably provide some assistance in that regard. So I recommend the second option, identify it as a parcel, tax it for two years and then put it up for sale because the taxes weren't paid.
And it subsumes the liability for the two years, the, the new owner then?
Yes, sir. What happens is when a property is put up for delinquent taxes, the costs of the sale are the first item that's taken out of the proceeds. The second item is the delinquent taxes. And then if there are any surplus amounts, and, and you're aware of that, they go into the circuit court for a period of two years. And if no one makes a claim to those surplus funds, and here no one would because the, the previous owner is defunct, those surplus funds go back, go to the county. So there's another secondary reason for my recommendation that you proceed with option two.
Yeah. The photograph doesn't do justice to the condition of that bulkhead that you see down. It's very, very dangerous and someone can get really hurt down there. You've probably visited the site yourself, Mr. Thomas, and it's extremely dangerous. So, I don't know, the, the property owner here, the abutting property owner wants to subsume the property and he may have to take Mr. Thomas's advice and talk to the four, or maybe talk to their attorney to see what they can do to, it's like a state owning piece of property, they can abandon it and then you can take it over. That, that happened in my old neighborhood. But I don't know what the recourse is because I'm not a lawyer. We have two lawyers in this room and I'm not one of them.
What, what's the accuracy of that line? Because Mr. Bazani mentioned that the line goes through the house, but is that line really as accurate as it is going through the guy's garage?
No. Not the property that you're looking at.
It's not.
Yeah, I would say it, it's off at least three or four feet, could be about just five or six.
So he's probably in his.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
I mean, the building, the structure that's there looks very close to the property.
Right. And there probably no binding requirements about the distance a parcel or a building has to be from a, a line, correct, on this subdivision?
I believe. That's a zoning question, but my understanding would concur with that.
Okay, so this particular parcel, that's not a parcel, is actually a non-buildable parcel, correct?
That hasn't yet to be determined definitively. Zoning would weigh in on that.
I'm just.
No, it's about a third of an acre, we don't know.
Yeah, okay, okay. So it sounds like the option that Mr. Wilmot brought up, number two, might be the most viable thing at present.
Definitely.
And we may want to take into consideration his sage advice and move that way rather than any other option.
Where will the proceeds go if this was sold?
If, if the county quitclaims it or sells, that they go to the county. If it's sold for delinquent taxes, it's, the costs of the sale are paid first and then the delinquent taxes and then a surplus goes to the county. And, and if you take option two, and I'm not trying to strongarm you here, you can take any of the options, you may think of a fifth option, I don't know. But if you do take the second option, that doesn't preclude this individual from simultaneously seeking private legal recourse. He could, he could do that at the same time. And this is not a situation issue or problem that arose overnight. If there are problems with the bulkhead, I'm sure they didn't happen yesterday. So I'm sure this has been going on for years and years and years.
So do we have to make a decision tonight?
I would say on the advice, on the advice of legal counsel, I think we should move forward with option two.
A motion?
If we need a motion.
We'll need a motion.
We don't, we don't need a motion, right?
Yeah. I agree with option two.
Yep.
So do I.
This is why we have a lawyer.
I'll say it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving revisions to the Board of Supervisors' grant management policies and procedures. Mr. Wright.
Thank you, gentlemen of the board. Good evening to you. If I may, I would like to echo the well wishes for and gratitude to Mr. Hedrick for his service, particularly to the community policy and management team, which is mandated by the Children's Services Act. I've had the privilege to work with him over the last year on that team and it has been a blessing and his contribution has been considerable. So thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen, I'll try to keep this really brief. Over the last several months, key stakeholders from finance, administration, parks, recreation and tourism, emergency management and the sheriff were asked to review and provide feedback for enhancement to our grants management policy. And to Mr. Bazani's point, while we don't have a dedicated internal auditor, we are always looking at ways in which we can be more efficient and improve our processes. And this is definitely one that we wanted to look at and streamline. So after a number of discussions and iterations, staff developed suggested revisions to the policy. And the proposed changes include adding an overview statement to further define the purposes, sources and types of grant funding, along with the overarching intent of the policy. An attempt to simplify the procedures by seamlessly merging the separate, previously separated or currently separated within budget cycle and outside of budget cycle sections that actually introduced some duplication and confusion on the part of staff. We also added a section detailing the steps involved in a grant feasibility review. So what we wanted to do was before they even get to the application process, we wanted to make sure that they were feasible, that they aligned with mission and vision, that they were critically evaluated regarding associated permanent or long-term expenditures that may be associated with a particular grant, and also being deliberate about match funding whenever applicable. We also incorporated guidance regarding grant management, monitoring and reporting. It was incorporated in that, but we wanted to be more specific and explicit about those pieces as well. And then finally incorporating information regarding the various roles and responsibilities within the process for each of the principal players. Those were the major proposed changes. Obviously, the board's oversight and approval privilege has not been altered in any way. We really just wanted to streamline the process, particularly to help new department heads understand it and be able to utilize it effectively.
Mr. Bazani.
Quickly, Mr. Wright, it would have been nice, I read through this and I didn't know which was, because this policy existed since, what, June of 2003, right?
Yes, sir.
And you've made modifications to it, so it would have been nice to put some red line changes to what you augmented so that we can see the changes without having to question the entire document.
Well, and part of the reasoning for that, sir, and we, we had actually talked to Mr. Wilmot and, and conferred amongst ourselves, there were such wholesale changes that it would have been nothing but red lines for the whole thing.
That was a good question. But we have our process.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I see it and I've read it, but you know, I, I don't understand grant work and so not, well, I just don't understand it and I don't know if the others do, but I mean, it looks okay to me. I, you know, I don't see any, do you see any egregious content in here?
They fixed it.
But who knows? They fixed it for, yeah, but they fixed it for staff, they didn't fix it for us. You know, we need to know whether there's some things in there that we don't agree with.
We, we still have the ultimate oversight on, on these processes.
And the county attorney has reviewed this.
And this makes it easier because some of these are so arduous to have to deal with that I, I really like what they did and I think it makes it a whole lot easier for staff. Mr. Wright's done a lot of good work with, with supporting staff to get this done and I see it as a big plus for us.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Wright.
Yes.
On the cost benefit analysis, I know you mentioned something about where some of the funds will apply for personnel. When you apply for grants that include personnel, does that include the health benefits also for those people so that it's not a burden on the county?
I mean, that's not really incorporated into this thinking necessarily.
Okay. I know one of the things I bring up all the time is with our grants, I know with all the grants that we have had, VIMS, they all have a component called the indirect cost recoveries. Does that ever get, and I've talked to Carol about this, it's, it's a difficult topic. In some agencies don't allow indirect cost recoveries at all.
Right.
But where we can, it's, it's a benefit because the indirect cost recoveries really are important for, you know, building maintenance and lights and electricity and all that.
We're, in the grants that we're applying for, they do not allow that. They may allow a grant manager or a project manager, but just as an indirect recovery, we're not able to get, I, I can't even think of a single grant that has allowed that. On the flip side, where we have met grant match with our indirect assistance, we have, we do an accounting of the hourly salary that does include all of our fringe.
Right.
Everything we go as high as we can on that to try to make the match as good as it can be.
With the grants that we get through the Planning District Commission, there are some indirects that we can do there, but it's, it's usually for a lot larger pot of money than what we're dealing with here.
Thank you, gentlemen. And there is a resolution on page 52 for your consideration.
Make the motion to approve the resolution on page 52.
Second.
Ms., one question. And I don't, I didn't see any reference to the appendage on page 63. Are you going to still use anything similar to that with the new, the attachment?
Yeah, actually, we've been working on creating a new one that's more streamlined as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Steele.
Was there a second?
Yes, I think. Was there? Yes. Ms. Steele.
Mr. Hedrick.
Yes.
Mr. Bazani.
Yes.
Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Dr. Orth.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution interposing no objection to the use of encroachment upon and traversing of certain rights of way by the Middle Peninsula Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority. Mr. Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, the county was contacted by Louis Lawrence, who's the director of the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission and also, I believe, serves in that capacity or like capacity with reference to the Middle Peninsula Public Access Authority, asking for the county's indication that has no objection to the PPA, the, the Public Access Authority, the PAA, traversing some county-owned rights of way. These are undeveloped rights of way, they're not in the state system of highways, they are identified in the resolution which appears on page, I don't know what page it is.
65.
65. So there's three rights of way. The PAA wants to develop some properties for, for residents and for park purposes and needs to provide sewage disposal service to these properties and approached the health department because the health department is the entity which grants these permits for septic systems. And according to the PAA and Mr. Lawrence, the health department was not inclined to issue a permit for the required septic systems because the systems would require traversing these county-owned rights of way. So the health department wanted from the county an indication that the county did not object to the PAA traversing, meaning under the ground, pipes to go from the proposed development to a drain field on the other side of the rights of way. So what you have in front of you is a resolution commencing on page 65 and 65 and 66 and continuing with maps attached with a proposed route that these pipes will take underneath the county rights of way. I crafted this resul- I crafted this resolution indicating that the county has no objection to the PAA utilizing these rights of way for that purpose and only for that purpose, upon certain conditions, the general protective language, vis-à-vis the county's legal interests, that they have to restore the rights of way to their previous condition following, following construction. They can only utilize the rights of way as proposed, that the PAA will be liable for any causes of action or damages or negligence which arise as a result of their utilization of our rights of way, the standard boilerplate legal mumbo jumbo protective language. That's all in there. It identifies the tax map numbers. I have not heard any concerns or objections with reference to this proposal, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilmot. Does, does this, does the language potentially impact any private property owners by the actions caused by PAA on this?
Not to my knowledge. I think Mr. Crisco may have more information.
Yeah. No, this, this is past the other public interest on this road. This is, is merely for the PAA to be able to develop this, or these parcels, in a way that the PAA can then have an income stream to help it fund itself. Because the PAA does not have the ability to make money. So this is, and it's, 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 there's a whole lot of things that are going on down here, but this makes it very eas, well, hopefully, it will make it easier for the Health Department to issue the permits needed for them to get the work done that they want to do.
This is all way, this is at the ends of the, at Land's End and Naxera, right?
There's only, if you look at the slide on page, or the sheet, page sixty-seven, the only resident that it would even come close to affecting would be down at the end of Land's End Road that's at the bottom of this page. And this is just to cut, go under the road, and they're gonna rebuild the road, so it's not gonna affect them at all.
So who owns the property? Who owns this property?
Which property?
Page sixty-seven, who owns this property that I'm looking?
The Middle Peninsula Public, Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority.
It was donated to them.
Oh, donate, okay, that's the answer I want.
Ten-ish years ago.
I was concerned that perhaps we've lost a revenue opportunity here, but they own the property, so.
It's been donated years ago.
Okay.
And we did advise Mr. Lawrence that this matter was on the agenda tonight, and, and I said there might be some questions, so he might want to attend. But I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus.
No, I, I talked to Mr. Lawrence earlier, so.
And they just expended a very significant, well, taxpayers' money to build a pier, a private, a public pier down there. It's really a very nice public pier.
Handicap accessible. Mr. Hedrick.
Yes, Mr. Wilmot, do you happen to know if the, the, the line itself is gonna go in the road, underneath, in the road, or to the side of the road?
To the side and across.
To the side, over?
To the side, across, to the side, across.
Okay.
So both. Some of it will go under, and some of it will be to the side. Because there are three, three rights of way involved.
But only short distances under the road.
The, these main lines that you see here are not in the middle of the road either. That's why we're standing off to the side. This will not be in the middle of the road.
Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, will the resident have the opportunity to connect to this system, if anyone knows? And two, what sort of public park and occupancy uses are planned?
So these residences will not be able to be built if this is not, if, if we don't grant the approval, the residences will not be built. At the actual Captain Sinclair location, there's a, an old abandoned house, and there's a pool house and pool there. Their goal is, and they've, they've received the approval even through our Chesapeake Bay Board for that pool house to be raised, and they were going to put in a tackle, beach-type shop, snack shop down there for people using that public pier. That's what's down there now. The main house, they're, they're in discussion with a couple of different entities on potentially renting that facility out for different, different things. We're not far enough along for that to, to know exactly what's gonna go in there, but they're going to be refurbishing the main house as well as that, that pool house down there at the facility to be used by the public.
This septic is only for the pool house.
Not available to the, not available to the existing resident at the end of Land's End.
Correct.
And, but there are additional houses being considered.
If you look at the second one.
The second page, there are additional houses that are being considered to be built.
Right when you come through the lion's gate where the brick house is?
Yes.
Over there on that side, if you stay straight instead of taking your left to go back around, just lands in.
So as, one more thing. As many of you know, the, the high school crew team rose out of that location, and my son is on the crew team, and I know Mr. Hudson has a long history with, with the crew team there. And so, as uses for that area is considered, I would appreciate it if, if the board could weigh in on that to the degree we are able to.
It would have to come.
Because the, you know, we've got high school students and middle school students who are down there, and so I think we need to think about the potential uses there.
It would, it would definitely come before the board, probably through some sort of zoning or, or different matters, but it would come back before the board. Because we, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Hudson and myself have made that clear, that depending on what that is, there are high school students that use that property for, for a crew.
Thank you.
The only downside about that property, and you know as well as I do, when the tide gets, gets up past three point two, it floods. It's, it's a quarter-way road, and you can have easily a foot of water on that road, and you're stuck.
Just drive through it. Okay, there's a resolution on page sixty-five, Mr. Hedrick?
Move to approve the resolution on page sixty-five.
Second.
Ms. Steele?
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith? Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, the next is a review and discussion of the board's twenty-twenty-four organizational meeting materials. Ms. Steele?
So the first organizational meeting you'll be reviewing and adopting, a number of documents. So the current copies are included in your packet. That's the rules of procedure, your standards of conduct, and the code of ethics. We would ask that you take a look at them, and if you have any modifications that you'd like to suggest, that you provide those to administration by December eighteenth, so that then that can be included as a draft in the next board packet. And then, in addition, we will be preparing the board's calendar for the year. And Ms. Cronin was very astute, or whatever the word would be, in looking at the calendar of when July fourth fell, and it's on a two, it's on a Thursday in twenty-twenty-four, but even, so the board could decide to meet the first Thursday, but knowing that many families take off that week. Sorry, first Tuesday. Then the suggestion was to leave that week alone and to move your standard adopted calendar with the third Tuesday being your one meeting in July. And if, if the board wants to do that, then you would know going into it that there's no conflict with July fourth. If you don't think it's a problem to have a meeting on that Tuesday, it's, it's not a holiday.
Mr. Chair, I think you have a good problem. I think we should just leave that week alone.
It should have been done a long time ago.
What do you mean, leave it, leave it to?
Not, not have a meeting the, the week of July the fourth.
On the week of July the fourth.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and then the next thing is, at the retreat, we had talked about potentially for the board holding, sorry.
Before we go that far, is everybody good with the third?
The third Tuesday in July.
July sixteenth?
Yes. July sixteenth. Okay.
Okay.
So now we've got six months in advance, seven months to not plan vacation. Mr. Wilmot, you're here.
Yes, I'm glad that I didn't pick that week.
So is Pooh.
So the board had indicated at the retreat that you would like to hold a half-day retreat in February and on a Saturday, and it looks like the two dates that we would be considering would be February tenth and February twenty-fourth. And if there's consensus on which one of those that the board would like to pick, we can build that into that calendar too.
What day is that?
They're both Saturdays.
Saturday. I'm good with that.
Either. Is anybody having a preference then?
It's Lunar New Year.
It is Lunar New Year.
I'm good with either the tenth or the twenty-fourth. I'd prefer the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth. What do you think, Mr. Hedrick?
I think you should ask this gentleman down here, who is the front?
Oh, speak for him, Mr. Hedrick, if you are.
You, you're still here right now.
I have no preference.
What in the world's with him?
All right, so I, looking at the twenty-fourth, and also wanted to mention, we know that Wycombe Lodge is always booked on Saturdays. Because it is a Saturday, we don't have to have any interference with work scheduling, so we could use the press room and be right here, or we could ask and see if the social services conference room is available. Does the board have a preference on location?
Cocktail served?
Not on either of those options, and they'd have to be an early morning one. We will have a, a.
They're called screwdrivers.
Or mimosas.
Bloody marys.
Bloody marys. So we were, we're looking at having breakfast, brunch kind of items like we did at the retreat, and then we would end before lunch would be needed, so.
From your lips to God's ears.
So if, if I have my druthers, then I'm gonna say the press room, because then that's less hauling around or having, and, okay. All right, great.
How many people are gonna be there?
We have two, two topics that we're talking about, at least at this point, and we'll confirm that. And one was the utilities, so I would assume we would have some representatives from utilities, and you'd have admin staff, and, and I'm sure Ms. Callaway. And then the other topic is looking at the strategic priorities.
I'm just wondering if second floor is large enough? No?
It's kinda tight, yeah. I don't think it is, no, because we've done interviews in there.
Can't help some people.
All right, so again, appreciate the board's input on any changes that you would like to see to these documents and, and to let Ms. Cronin know by the eighteenth. And that is all I have on that topic.
One, one quick question.
Mr. Bizani?
On the boards and policies, and I'm just asking for you guys to consider, would it be appropriate for when a speaker comes up to speak that we would be allowed to ask them questions along the way? Or is that, we want to maintain the policy?
I want to, I'd prefer to maintain the policy.
Okay.
We'd be extending every meeting.
I mean, you know, I, I look at it, the citizens are up here to speak, they need to speak. And sometimes, that, as tonight, when emotions get high, you extend their time a little bit, but you need to be mindful of that for everyone else that's here.
Fair enough.
Perhaps going forward, you know, situations like this, we could, well, never mind, I'm not even gonna say it. I'm gonna stop right there.
I appreciate you allowing me to speak as a citizen tonight, though.
Paid your taxes today, I hope. Okay, next item on the agenda is the telecommunications, what's it called? The telecommunications, telecommunication initiative grant applications.
I got it. Before we move forward, I know we're not supposed to use our electronic devices, but someone did just notify me via my cellphone that Saturday, February the twenty-fourth and March the second are the two Saturdays prior to the March fifth presidential primary, meaning the press room will be used, being utilized for early voting. It just has not been posted as of yet.
Okay, thank you for that.
So we may need to go to the tenth.
The, the advantage of the tenth is, if we go to the tenth and the board wants to do something, there's still enough time to do like a public hearing advertisement or things like that related to utilities. Okay. All right, good. That was good information to have. Thank you.
I usually don't get something that important on my phone during a meeting, but I thought I'd share.
I just had a spam call, and I didn't want to share that with you all.
You've only gotten one?
Tonight.
Yeah, no kidding.
Tonight.
Tonight.
So there are two resolutions before you that are identical with, with the exception of the providers' names. And I'm, I'm happy to say that after talking with you at the retreat and explaining that Cox had provided a map like the day before, identifying an area that they would be interested in partnering with the county for a new VODI grant to provide fiber to the home for a certain number of areas. They call them six areas, but it's really eight, because they have like a three B and a five B. I think they just once, said they were gonna be six and realized they hadn't more, so they just made them Bs. But anyway, it's eight identified areas in the county. And that leaves a lot of the county still untouched, which we expressed, that's part of the thing of, you know, that Cox is never gonna be able to, it would be hard for anybody to make a business model to reach some of the homes, and that's why fixed wireless communication is still important, to be able to have ubiquitous broadband. Well, I'm pleased to say that in a follow-up conversation with Verizon today, that even, they decide, they, they are happy to look at playing second fiddle and to potentially partner with us on a second application that would cover additional areas that Cox is not going to address. Now, there's no promise that, in fact, I have received late this afternoon, I have to send it back to them tomorrow. They may get the address list back, understanding where, what's available, and it may not be a feasible business plan, but they said, you know, nothing, you know, nothing hurts to try, let's do it. And the grant application, they would submit all the information that we would need to put it together. It's pretty much, the, the technical part is cookie cutter for them. So what I would like to do, and the resolutions have it, we would like to pursue both opportunities, if at all possible. So this allows us to not get held up on the grant deadline with y'all not having another meeting. And then, once we submit that information, then we can put those maps out there so the public could see where we're applying for. And I, I believe what's gonna happen is, with the only fifty million dollars being available in VODI grant funds and almost one point five billion available in BEAD funds, I think that these applications, if they're not funded, will just roll over to BEAD. They may mod, get modified, but I will be coming back to the board at some point with a BEAD. You're, you're gonna get requests from at least those two and maybe others to do a letter of support for just one, for BEAD. You have to pick a provider, but they can all apply. And if they have the county's endorsement, they get an extra ten points. So that'll come later on in the next few months, but we'll see if we can get the VODI first.
So there's two resolutions that Ms. Cronin put on our desk. One is, we'll, do we need to do them individually? I guess we will. One is for the resolution.
For Cox.
The resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute and submit a grant proposal for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Virginia telecommunications initiative programs with Cox.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As long, Ms. Steele?
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
The next one is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute and submit a grant proposal for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Virginia telecommunications initiative program with Verizon.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Steele?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Okay, both motions can pass. Okay, both motions pass. Thank you.
Um, board appointments. There were none?
We got three.
No, I meant in additional.
Oh, no additional, correct. I'll make the motion to reappoint Mr. Chad Scott to the LUPC. Do you want to do the other two?
Yeah, let's do, I'll, um, make a motion to accept Mr. Perry for Parks and Rec for the Avenue District. And you need the other guy.
Trey Hardaway.
Trey Hardaway, just say Trey Hard, he can say District, right. Here, look, yes.
Second, sorry. He's, he's over here telling me just do it.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Hey, can I ask one?
Sure.
The utilities committee, we just seem to have, be having a really hard time to find people who want to be on the utilities advisory committee. And the Avenue District has been vacant forever. So I was going to ask Mr. Wilmot, I know we had talked about another committee where we could have someone from another district. Or is this set by the bylaws that they have to have someone by in each district?
Each committee is unique in reference to its qualifications because they have differing bylaws. So I don't know, but I will check.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is county attorney items. Would like to hear boards and commission reports. Somebody wanted to bring something up. Supervisor discussion. All right, let's go to supervisor discussion.
It was coming back because it seems like there is some misinformation, misunderstanding. I don't know what you want to call it on the availability of funds for the firehouse. And I know that when we had those meetings, it was, it was stated that if the referendum did not pass, there would be opportunity to fund the firehouse with retiring debt service at the end of fiscal year twenty-four. How much debt service do we have retiring this year?
It would be fall of twenty, uh, fall of twenty-four, which would be FY twenty-five. So you're right, end of the calendar twenty-four, but I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Twenty-five. And I don't know if Maria can pull out that exact, uh, figure. I, I'm a little puzzled myself about some of the information that was stated tonight. Cause I know I was asked at several different times if the money was in the bank and the money is not in the bank as far as if we keep the policy, um, uh, you know, for the fund balance. So we've always talked, it would have to be a borrowing. And I was asked that several times again, you know, at town halls and it's like, no, it would, it would mean a borrowing, it would be a different type of borrowing.
I think we were looking at somewhere around three hundred thousand. I don't, I don't know the exact amount, but I think the debt was somewhere around three hundred, but I could be wrong. I know we've talked about that debt.
Yeah, that's, that would be helpful. Just because I know that currently we're paying about four point four million dollars in debt service annually. Based on the Davenport study, it's four point three and some change. But I do know that it was stated that the money would come available as debt service retired, but it wouldn't be at the June thirtieth, it would be on over probably September, October before it was completely resolved. But it does sound like that is still an opportunity for us. And I would like the board to keep that in mind as we work through the budget this year as, because it's one of those things that we have, that's, that's, that's one of our have to get done's. These folks are operating in, in subpar, somewhat subpar conditions down there. But I just wanted to make sure because I, I thought of some other stuff to say to this afternoon about it because I've been hearing it as well. I mean, I had several calls today about it. And I'm, I was telling the folks, I said, listen, we're not going to get the four and a half percent or five percent borrowing. It'll cost us more, but we will have debt service. And if I could get that number, it'd be helpful.
That was embedded in a lot of the discussions that we had with Davenport and all those. Every time we met, we had those sheets that had all of the different types of income that would be available when debt service was retired. And we got, there was a sheet that had all the debt service when they, when they would be retired, all the way through, I think, twenty thirty-two or something like that. So yeah, those numbers are there.
It was out to thirty-five and beyond.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing, um, I think, um, Mr. Crisco, you mentioned something to the effect that we should look at. Because, uh, at the last meeting you mentioned that with the money that we get, the one percent, we're now exceeding the expected pre, uh, budget, the expected numbers every year. That if that continues, it opens up the possibility of doing some things with schools that we had not had the opportunity to, that were included in the referendum. So we need to look.
But that's going to be money way down the road.
Well, right, but it, it's something that, you know, we can look at on a yearly basis. Cause right now we are exceeding the expected five million, but it's, the five million goes up every year. Oh, we, well, I'm not saying, I just said that, that's what Mr. Crisco brought up.
And, and to Mr., to Dr. Orth's point there, you know, there are projects that were listed in that referendum that if that money continues to build, because we have the option to pay that down sooner or that, that debt down sooner, or we could take that money if it continues to pool up and pick out, oh, look, we're at year fifteen, we have three million dollars. We could do one of those projects and just pay cash for it out of that borrowing if that excess continues. I don't know if it'll continue. I mean, we've been sitting here for over a year now waiting for the bottom to fall out that they've been telling us and now they're like, oh, we're not so sure if it's going to happen now, but who knows? But if it continues to roar along like this, some of those school projects may end up being able to be picked off and added on to if that continues.
Yeah, but that would definitely, like you said, it's going to be ten or fifteen years down the road.
Maybe, maybe not. We don't, I mean, again, we, we just don't know. But again, it was an option that you brought up.
You know what you owe though.
Right.
So the only thing is going to be, does the board want to take a risk of, um, spending money on a different project because you think that you're going to, you know, accumulate over the entire time period more than originally. So, if to me, it would be in the last quarter of that borrowing that you might look at that, not anytime soon. So also remember that, not trying to be negative, but the projects that we are priced, that we were trying to do, they're not going to cost the same. So all of that has, so if there's eight million left over, eight million's not going to buy ten years from now what it would buy today. Potentially, maybe it'll buy more because again, we don't know what the consequences.
We could have different issues that when we get to that point as well. If I think of what else I was going to say, I'll come back. There was something else I was going to say.
Anything else on supervisor discussion?
One other, there, there has been rumblings and I don't, I have not seen the full legislative agenda yet. There has been rumblings, you know, it's Gloucester County and Halifax County have that one percent sales tax. For these school projects. There have been rumblings that legislators are bringing forward that to make it statewide to fund these school building projects. Yeah, but it's, it, it could very well be coming. That there will be additional funds for the school side of things with an additional one percent statewide.
But isn't, isn't true that Halifax is banking their money for a new high school? They're not even spending it. They're collecting it and holding it for a new high school. Cause you don't have to spend it. The board decides what, how to spend it for capital projects for the schools. And I think that's what they're doing. They're saving for a new high school.
Well, I was going to say legally you can't do when you do the bond, but if they don't, I guess for the sales tax, they possibly could.
Yeah, they can.
But, um, I did want to mention that I, that, uh, Trish took a call for me today from, was it Richmond, Daily Press?
Hudson's Forest with the PDC and I've heard it, but that's all that I've heard is it might be coming and the devil's in the details, is Mr. Wilmot saying.
It'd have to be in the newspaper because, you know, I heard it too and I think I read it. So I think it's something that's out there and so it's coming, but whether it is approved or not, we don't know.
I, I find it kind of odd because when your predecessor and I went to Richmond to talk to Senator Norman, even his eyebrows raised when he said, why does Halifax get the special treatment and not? And, and in Gloucester, you're asking for it as well. Why isn't the other localities getting the same? It seems, smacks of good old boy syndrome in the, in the state legislature. You know, we'll smack your back and we'll give you the one cent, but no one else gets to have it. And that's what it's, that's what it sounded like to Brent and I when we went up there to visit with Tommy. Norman?
Some of the localities have really been lobbying hard for it and, um, including, um, Isle of Wight County. And, um, the, the comment, the email said to make it available all over. So I don't, I, I would doubt that we would have anything new, but I think for all of us, we would understand the need that the localities have. And it gives counties more control, which that's what is one of the things that the board is supporting. So I think it's a good thing, even if it doesn't help us anymore.
For almost a decade and a half now that I've been with. We've been asking for it. I, 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 my, my greater fear is with this is going to come, because you know, we, we, we talked to Vito a lot quarterly and even more so than that, when, when he's not making a presentation, that devolution has been a hot topic and it comes up every couple of years and, uh, would be really anxious to see what the new legislator, legislature in, in Richmond wants handles at this year as well.
I have that number. It's actually seven thirty-seven is retiring, it's as of fiscal year twenty-five.
Wasn't it about fourteen million that could be borrowed with that based on five percent?
It's, uh, yeah, it, there is a, um, if we push it out to, I don't have the exact date, but if we push it out to have that one, a little bit of eck on, I think it was just enough to get the fire department projects. It was about fourteen million.
Yeah, which, right, which hopefully would be more than enough, but again, everything goes up, so, one price.
Thank you, Ms. Calloway.
Thank you. The next is close meeting and then we'll wait a couple of seconds.
He already adjourned.
Let's all turn around and look at him.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.